I call this meeting of Fairfield County Council to order Monday, May 14, 2018 at 6:00 PM. First item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council now approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? None. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Agenda is approved, seven to zero. Next is the invocation by Councilmember Paulie.
Let us pray. Please guide our hearts as we make our decisions. We seek you first in all we do together. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Paulie. Next is the approval of minutes. We've got four tonight. We'll approve all of these together unless anybody has any questions about any specific minutes. Budget work session, April 17, 2018. Regular meeting, April 23, 2018. Budget work session, April 24, 2018, and the budget work session from May 7, 2018. Do we have a motion?
To approve, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven to zero. Those minutes are approved. No public presentations tonight. First public comments session. Mrs. Davis.
We have three to speak tonight. First, Ms. Shirley Green, speaking on the budget.
Fairfield County Council, I know you've worked hard to craft a budget for Fairfield County. I commend you. I have a few observations that may be beneficial in the future. Unless I'm mistaken, the online FairfieldSouthCarolina.com portal does not have a copy of the budget that will be presented tonight. Most budget items were timestamped for 11-18. I did talk to someone and she said that because it's not approved, that that's the reason that it's not online. So that's a clarification that I just received prior to the meeting. I didn't see a line item for the approximately $4 million request from Fairfield Memorial Hospital. Does the $1,430,000 in your hospital line item, 507-106, include subsidies for the new Providence emergency facility since it will open next fiscal year? In line item 100-018, animal control budget increase of 18.15%, was a cost analysis done to compare a contract for service instead of hiring veterinary assistant? I'm happy to see increases in transportation, Office on Aging, Midlands Tech, and Eau Claire Cooperative Health budgets. As a suggestion, as you use more and more work released prison labor, let's make sure that we enhance their skill levels so that they may have work experience that will be marketable when they are released from prison. That way, it's a win-win for us all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Randy Sisk, speaking on the budget.
Good evening, Council. Like Ms. Green, my problem is budget. I was here two weeks ago when you were listening to our sheriff. It is a fact that as temperatures rise, people get irritated. We have a senior paramedic in the back that can account for what I'm saying. When it gets hot, people get irritated. You have more violent crimes. I seriously ask you to readjust, to look at the sheriff's budget. If he's down seven, if we've got to cut a road being made, if we've got to cut a piece of equipment being bought, we've got to do it to get that man the equipment. The vehicles in the yard are great, but they don't run calls. It is the deputy sheriff that runs the calls. He's the one that steps in and fights on our behalf. I'm too old. I'm coming up on 60. I'm not going to fight you. I'm going to resort back to what I was trained as a medic, and I've got some family. Billy, no, none of your family, but the Smith family, the Remington family. Yeah, I'm just too old to fight, and that's what's going to happen. So I recommend, I highly suggest that you move some dollars around and get the sheriff, at least meet him halfway. 25% was insulting. Thank you, sir. Take care.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on SCANA.
Randy Bright, District 1, Ridgeway. First of all, I'm pleased to see that we're still pursuing legal address against SCANA, appropriately named. But I would like to ensure that we're addressing all possibilities. And one possibility is, certainly to explore, is criminal pursuit, at least maybe through the Attorney General. You know, fraud was perpetrated on the entire state by SCANA. We see that in the papers every day, all too often, and every day it just gets worse. Fraud was also perpetrated specifically on Fairfield County, not just the physical plant and all that. But we made a $50 million bet on what SCANA had told us. And of course, right now, we would have been better off going to the racetrack with that money than betting on SCANA. So another alternative is, what about those who gave us the ill-advised advice to pursue the $50 million bet with SCANA? Parker Poe. I don't really know what part they played in it, but I think there's a lot of recourse, legal recourse, we should be exploring. Number one, criminal prosecution for fraud against us. Put a little heat on them. Let them know you're at least exploring it. Number two, be sure we're pursuing both the angle of the fraud leading us to the $50 million bet on FFC and this, the general collapse and lack of promises on getting our fee-in-lieu money. And then, of course, Parker Poe should certainly be looked at for their bad advice that they gave us. There are a lot of statutes for legal advice, financial advice out there. And I guarantee you, Parker Poe would not want their name in a paper for somebody that's angry about their advice that they gave us. Something to explore, but thanks for going the extra mile by exploring what you are. Maybe you can go even further. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes Segment 1.
Thank you. Next is public hearings. We have one tonight. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an amendment to the fee agreement between Fairfield County and Element TV Company LP, an amendment to a special source revenue credit agreement between Fairfield County and Element Real Estate Holdings LLC, an amendment to a lease agreement between Fairfield County and Element Real Estate Holdings LLC, the execution and delivery of such other documents as may be necessary to affect the intent of this ordinance and other matters related thereto. We'll open this public hearing at 6:08 PM. Mrs. Davis, did anyone sign to speak?
We have one speaker, Mr. Bright.
Thank you.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District 1. When I see an extra sign-up sheet to speak, I'm going for it. But in all seriousness, and I hope that will come out, but I'd like to see the details of this, it's also in the ordinance group also, of this presentation. And when I talk about details, I'm not talking about in the weeds, but two specific details. This agreement, how would it impact Fairfield County, both from a negative and a positive? In other words, what are we going to get for it, and what do we have to give for it? And that would be true for any ordinance we have on there tonight. Now, I would also say, I think it's just outstanding that many of tonight's ordinances are dealing with promoting business within the county. Way to go, guys. Good to see you working with business and having an open door, working with business, promoting Fairfield County business and encouraging them. That's a big part of your job, and thanks to the economic development team in that measure, too. One aspect of promoting business while we're on that subject, we've got national recognition last week, thanks to one of our local businesses. And it's been, actually, it's been nationally recognized before. But I would think that we would do justice and help promote that national recognition by acknowledging and with some sort of honorarium to Laura's Tea Room for getting national recognition in USA Today for being one of the top tea rooms in the nation. And that will help our image. It's deserved, and it, just another step in showing that Fairfield County promotes Fairfield businesses. Think about that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. That was all.
That's all.
All right. We will take a motion at 6:10 PM to close this public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded that the public hearing be closed at 6:10 PM. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven to zero. That public hearing is closed. Now, we're on to third and final reading of Ordinance Number 696. This is an ordinance to establish operating capital budgets for the operation of the county government of Fairfield County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018, to provide for the levy of taxes for Fairfield County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, to provide for other county purposes, to provide for certain fiscal and other matters related to county government and other matters related thereto. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council give third and final reading to Ordinance Number 696. Any discussion? Mr. Roof?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that the budget be amended by allocating $87,507 to the Fairfield County Chamber of Commerce and stipulate that the funding be granted only in the case that the chamber allows the county council chair to appoint a council member to the chamber board as a voting non-office holding member.
Seconded.
All right. It's been moved and properly seconded to amend the budget, as stated by Mr. Roof, that the county provide or allocate $87,507,000 to the Chamber of Commerce and stipulate that the funding be granted only in the case that the council, or that the chamber allows the council chair to appoint a council member to the chamber board as a voting non-office holding member. Do we have any discussion on that motion to amend in the second? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion to amend?
Aye.
Those opposed? The amending motion passes. Do we have any discussion on the main motion? No discussion? Mrs. Goins.
Mr. Chair, not a discussion, but I do appreciate that move being made. I appreciate that amendment being in place, and it is a good thing. Thank you.
Right. And just to build upon that, I think it would be appropriate for us, you know, we did have a couple citizens who came to the budget work sessions and very much appreciate that. Wish some of the questions or things that pointed out here tonight had been pointed out during those. But Mr. Taylor, would you just provide a little bit of information on what the chamber provided us? We did ask that they provide us with a plan, and if you could just go over that a little bit for the benefit of those in the room who may be interested in that and why we have made the motion to include the funding?
Yes, without going into every detail, they did give us a detailed list of all the different events and activities and programs that they will offer to help promote business. It was a mix of moving forward to try to help revitalize downtown Main Street, to get some of those empty buildings with stores back in them, to be active again and productive for our community. It was a mix of that, that kind of new direction, plus some of the comfortable things that we've become accustomed to that the chamber does, such as Rock Around the Clock, and those events that help promote Winsboro and promote Fairfield County and Ridgeway and Jenkinsville.
Thank you. And I'll just add that I appreciate the folks at the chamber after we requested some more information stepping up and giving that over to us. That was a big step from what we were kind of concerned about. Mr. Roof?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, too, that the chamber is a great asset to the county, and it would be greatly missed. And so I'm glad everybody got on board, and I'm certainly glad to see Terry Vickers back, bring this thing back together and be fully functional and continue on as it has in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion to provide third and final reading to Ordinance 696? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Third and final reading is provided to Ordinance 696 by a vote of seven to zero. Now, down to Item B, third and final reading, Ordinance Number 697. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an amendment to a fee agreement between Fairfield County and Element TV Company LP, an amendment to a special source revenue credit agreement between Fairfield County and Element Real Estate Holdings LLC, an amendment to a lease agreement between Fairfield County and Element Real Estate Holdings LLC, the execution and delivery of such other documents as may be necessary to affect the intent of this ordinance and other matters related thereto. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded that third and final reading be given to Ordinance Number 697. Any discussion? I would ask Mr. Taylor, any economic development staff in the room, since a question was asked about this tonight, I don't think there was very much information at the last meeting. Understand some of this is executive session type in nature, but since this is third and final reading, any information that you all can give without divulging something that would be harmful to the county?
Essentially, what we're doing here, Element TV, the county has deemed is a good and valuable member of our corporate community. We're glad to have them here and the jobs they've created. When they initially came, we put in place three different incentives. One was the lease agreement, one was the special revenue, special source revenue credit, and the other was the fee in lieu of. Those are three things that were put in place. And what we're doing here is because, really, at no fault of their own, there were certain tariffs that went back and forth and got put in place, they weren't able to meet the thresholds that were originally put in place for them to access all of these different incentives that we put in place. So since they weren't able to meet the threshold of both investment and job creation, we're having to go back and amend to allow them to get these incentives because we had to lower the threshold for both the jobs and the investment so they can qualify for these things, and it doesn't penalize them. Because, again, them not meeting those thresholds was at no fault of their own. And we're hoping at this point, we can give them these incentives, and they can continue to be prosperous here and hopefully expand.
Now, how many folks does Element have working over there now?
I prefer to tie on that.
So the good news is 225 folks in Fairfield County employed.
Correct.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? All right. Those in favor of providing third and final reading to Ordinance Number 697, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, seven to zero. Ordinance Number 697 is given third and final reading. First reading by title only, Ordinance Number 698. This is an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599, to provide for the zoning reclassification from RD 1 to B 1 of 150.32 acres owned by Sharp Recreational Properties, applicant as Fairfield County Council, Tax Map Number 203-00-01-157-000. Property is located at 3248 US Highway 21 South Ridgeway, South Carolina. Again, this is first reading, so there'll be no discussion. We have a motion?
So moved.
The motion has been made and properly seconded to provide first reading of Ordinance Number 698. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ordinance Number 698 is given first reading. First reading by title only, Ordinance Number 699, an ordinance to regulate construction and development of flood hazard areas in the unincorporated areas of Fairfield County and to repeal, Ordinance Number 586.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council give first by title only reading to Ordinance Number 699. No discussion. Since it's first reading, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ordinance Number 699 is given first reading by a vote of seven to zero. Resolution Number 2018-03, a resolution authorizing the amendment of both a fee-in-lieu-of-advalorem tax agreement and an infrastructure credit agreement between Fairfield County and Caterpillar Incorporated to a company known to the county as Project T and providing for related matters. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council approve the resolution Number 2018-03. If we could just get a little bit of explanation from staff on this one for the benefit of those in the room.
As everyone's aware, Caterpillar is no longer with us, and we've been working hard to try to get another company in that particular building. And fee-in-lieu-of agreements, some of these incentives that we give, they're transferable. And so what we're looking to do is lure another company into the Caterpillar building and transfer the agreements, the incentive agreements that we had given Caterpillar to this company.
Mr. Taylor, just not on this, but on D, first reading only, repeal?
Mr. Douglas, we have to stick to the resolution that we're on for discussion here.
Okay.
Anything else on Resolution 2018-03? All right. Those in favor of approving the resolution? Aye. Those opposed? Seven to zero. Resolution 2018-03 is approved. If there are any other questions, just to point out, we can ask those in council time. Boarding commission minutes, we have three for tonight. We'll do all three of these unless anyone has questions or comment on specific ones. Aeronautics commission, hospital board, and disabilities and special needs.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council approve the board and commission minutes as submitted. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By a vote of seven to zero, those board and commission minutes are approved. We have no board or commission appointments, no old business, no new business. County administrators report. Mr. Taylor?
Yes. First item I have is I'd like to invite our workforce investment director, Ms. Jennifer Leepard, up to discuss. We have been working with the group, the funding source of that department, and they have provided additional funds, knowing our situation, again, with BC Summer, and that our unemployment is spiking, to assist us with more workforce programs. Ms. Leepard, if you would.
Sure. Good evening, Council. I almost feel like a regular now. I'm getting a little used to this. Two of our contracts were modified, the dislocated worker contract and the youth contract, both adding additional funds. $60,000 was added for training and for supportive services, and that's to accommodate the increased demand. For our youth, an additional $44,894 was added, and that's for assessment, instructional training, supported services, work experience, and that is also to support the increased demand. There is also additional funds added. Well, the $44,894 also includes, for the last few months of the fiscal year, to add another youth case manager, so we can serve more of the youth population. So our goal is to get that person on board and trained before the new fiscal year begins.
So we add another staff member, but it is grant funded.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council members? All right. Ms. Leepard, we very much appreciate you being with us tonight and a week or so ago when you stayed with us till about 12 o'clock.
I know. It was a long night, yeah.
And said less than you said this time. But could you give us just a little bit of information for the folks who are in the room on the program, and I hope it's still in place?
Sure.
For the youth in the county who can get scholarship funding through WIOA for college, Midlands Tech, you know, those type things?
Sure. Basically, with the youth program, what we focus primarily on is vocational training. So we use various training providers through, there's a website called SC Path, and that's where you can see the list of eligible training providers for the Midlands. So there's a few different ways that youth can qualify for WIOA, depending on their address. If it's considered to census track as high poverty, they can qualify that way. And if they need additional assistance, like with employment, for school, that's one of the main ways. Or a single parent, if they have, if they have, like, a one-parent household, or if their family is getting SNAP benefits, TANF, FII, something like that, we can also use that to qualify them. Really, most of the youth, if they're staying within, you know, the Midlands to go to school, and they're going to a two-year school, will likely qualify for the program. If they're going off out of town to school, we typically can enroll them because it does require some activity on a monthly basis, and usually it's about a two-year commitment.
So what's the dollar amount that can be contributed?
The dollar amount is $14,000. And I could be wrong. I want to say $14,500. It might be $14,200.
Like what I've heard, yeah.
Okay. That's the max amount per youth participant. Now, that does vary. As far as the adults, though, the cap is $8,500.
So the good news is, most people have no clue that WIOA can do stuff like this.
Yeah.
I mean, from what you said, I could have qualified, you know.
That's possible, yes.
But a lot of folks just don't realize that WIO does that type of stuff. So thanks for sharing that with us.
Oh, you're welcome. And just also, as far as the adults, enrollment has been opened up to include other adults, even if they're working, that need occupational skills training in order to advance or gain employment that's, you know, more sustainable. So, I mean, really, we can enroll quite a few people, so we encourage, you know, anyone to please come and at least, you know, at least hear about the program and try.
Okay. Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you so much for what you're doing. How is this information being passed out in the community? Do you have a?
We distribute flyers and brochures to different county agencies and different partner agencies as well. The Midlands Fatherhood Coalition refers people to us, DSS does, Adult Education. We also attend different youth committee meetings, business service meetings, and to try to get the word out, we go to the high school to present. So actually, our youth case manager in the next week or so will go to Fairfield Central and present to most of the graduating class.
Right. Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Anything else? Thanks again.
The next item we have is a request of action. This is to purchase approximately 8.5 acres of land adjacent to our current wood chipping site on Airport Road. We had discussed this in the previous budget, or the current budget that we're in right now, actually. And we had a presentation that burning, incinerating wood would save us money as opposed to chipping. So we had budgeted previously $115,000 to move forward with an incineration program as opposed to just all chipping. We did run into a situation where, obviously, when you incinerate, there's smoke associated with it, and we didn't have enough land to meet DEHAC requirements to handle the smoke. So we did look at purchasing this 8.5 acres. We got a cost of $19,295 for the entire 8.5 acres, $22.70 an acre. We did take this to finance, and finance has recommended to full council to purchase this so we can move forward with incinerating.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. Request of action. We have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council approve the purchase of approximately 8.5 acres of land adjacent to the wood chipping site on Airport Road, a price of $19,295. Administration and Finance Committee has recommended approval of that item. Do we have any discussion? Yes, Mr. Paulie.
So it's necessary for us to purchase this land for us to do what we need to do, correct?
It is correct.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Taylor. Just as a reminder, is this funding going to come out of the current budget, or is it going to come out of the next one?
It'll come out of this current budget.
Okay. And that's because we actually, just to point out for folks who are in the room who weren't here the other night, we actually recognize some savings in the incinerator that we're purchasing and the value that we had attributed or allocated for that in the previous year. Actually, we'll pay for all of this now.
That is correct, yes.
Which in turn should help us in terms of the wood chipping costs going down if we can incinerate some of it.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. The purchase is approved. We're now down, excuse me.
We have a few more items. Another request of action, and this is for the purchase of an ambulance. And we had looked at going ahead and purchasing an ambulance a little earlier, again, with the situation with the hospital and the transition that we're going through there. We wanted to make sure that we had all of, a sufficient amount of ambulances rolling in case we need to take people out of the county. We have, in this current year, replaced the engine to keep an older ambulance going, to keep that on the road. We were looking to go ahead and purchase a new one next year, in this next coming budget year. But we wanted to order it a little earlier because it takes two to three months for these things to come in. And we did put it in the budget for next budget year, but we wanted to go ahead and order it this budget year. And to put that order in, we wanted to get council's blessing.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council approve the purchase of an ambulance. Mr. Taylor, what was that dollar amount?
The total dollar amount's $216,256, and this would be coming out of our vehicle replacement fund, which I think has $471,000.
All right. So the motion is to approve the purchase of the ambulance at the value of $216,256. Do we have a motion?
Hmm.
Motion. All right. Any discussion? Motion been made and properly seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The purchase is approved.
A few more little items to update council on. The cleanup of the Martin property in Jenkinsville, we purchased that a little while back. It's a small portion of a piece of property. Had an old dilapidated club on it. We have cleaned it off. I think it's looking a lot better. Davis has pictures of the process. Update council.
That's where it was. This is now, and that's the final product. What we're going to try to do is to get a landscaped architect and move some monuments of Jenkinsville into that area. Y'all may have heard us talk about the Principal's monument that was on another piece of property, and we will have this to make tribute to Jenkinsville. And I think Ms. Bertha might want to add to that, if you would like to add to it.
Mrs. Goins?
Yes. Also, would like to see on that property, I haven't brought it, well, I've forgotten some information, but I don't have details yet, would like to see it as a memorial for that area. And I'm going to talk with someone about individuals or families purchasing a brick with their family name on it, because so many people contributed to Western Fairfield, to Jenkinsville area, and just as a memorial, you know, make, set it up really nice. But the bricks will be purchased by family members, even businesses that were in that area that contributed to the community. were in that area that contributed to the community. Also, anybody that want to contribute by a brick that says, "I'm going to invest in the community in the future," you know, but we really want to fix it something really nice. Also, hoping that we'll be able to get some kind of a facility building there, wants to say, I know how our situation is now, so we have to kind of watch it with our monies. Was saying about a, something for the sheriff's department or whatever, but a building that may be a multipurpose building, we might could use it later on for a little store or something like that, but something like that workable, so when people do come or do stop, maybe even a little shop or something somebody would like to open, have the business to lease out, a building to lease out, somebody want to open a little shop, they can buy souvenirs of Fairfield County or whatever, you know, something like that. But the main thing is to just open up and remind of how great Western Fairfield is in Fairfield County, and to have the public share, have the citizens share in that as a memorial.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments on the Martin property? Mr. Anderson?
I just wanted to let y'all know, anytime the county started doing something this magnitude, people start calling, or did get a phone call today from the surrounding landowner, and just wanted, he wanted me to let y'all know if y'all need any more property, just let him know. He was happy about sending it being cleaned up. He asked me to tell you.
Wonderful, we accept.
Would they be willing to extend the same price?
No.
Yeah, I figure.
Oh, okay, okay.
Anything else, Mr. Taylor?
Issue, we have the tornadoes, everyone's aware, out in the Lake Watery area, especially the Watery Keys area got hit pretty hard, a lot of debris left over, we're trying to get cleaned up. We got some cost, it was going to be very expensive, we're working with DOT. I'll let Davis, Davis has been working very closely with DOT, give council the details. I think that we're going to be able to work with them, they're going to be able to do it at no cost to us.
Yeah, about a week ago, we had the F-1 tornado to go across Lake Watery. I got several phone calls, so did Councilman Douglas, and state DOT is going to handle this. You see all the road, all the debris beside the road, it's a quite a good bit. What they're going to do now, they put out competitive bids, and the bids range from fourteen thousand to fifty thousand to actually move these trees due to this natural disaster. So what they're going to do is move all the prop, all the wood to a piece of property that they own, and they're going to chip it themselves, so they're not asking anything from the county at this point. But they'll be handling this in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on that? All right, next is the clerk of council's report, Mrs. Davis.
Yes, sir. Council, our next regular meeting is scheduled for May the 28th, which falls on the Memorial Day holiday. Would council be amenable to moving the May 28 meeting to May 29?
All right, so council members, we just need to decide what we want to do with that meeting. It will be a holiday, staff will be out of the office, so if we want to move that to the 29th, we can take a motion to that effect at this time?
Chair?
Yes, Mr. Robbins?
Make a motion that we move council meeting to the 29th versus the 28th.
All right. All right, it's been moved and properly seconded that the 28th regularly scheduled meeting being moved to May 29 to account for Memorial Day holiday. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, aye. Those opposed, that council meeting is being moved to May 29. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Next is the second public comment session.
We have two speakers tonight. First, Ms. Laura Willingham, speaking on rehab.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Laura Willingham, and I'm the Director of Rehab Services at the hospital. I'm here this afternoon with another employee, Tanya, and we would just like to express some concerns we have regarding our current administration at the hospital, keeping rehab services in Fairfield County and Providence Hospital. First, we question and don't quite understand some of the decisions that have been made by the administration regarding finances, their priorities at this stage in the game, and treatment of some loyal employees. Of course, we'll do what they ask us to do until closing, or until our fate is decided, but still it is concerning to us. The staff and I feel very strongly that rehab needs to stay in Fairfield County. I had the opportunity recently to visit the Providence Northeast Campus and their rehab facility and meet with Lindy, the CEO there, and unfortunately, I didn't get a warm, fuzzy feeling like I thought I would when I left. Most people in Fairfield County that come to rehab have some traveling issues, and I feel that they're not going to be able to make the distance, two or three days a week to go to Providence Northeast. So we're really concerned that maybe Providence doesn't quite understand that. They have a very nice state-of-the-art facility that it, that they need patients to fill. The repeated comment I got was, "We need to figure out how to serve the people of Fairfield County with rehab service, services," but never mentioned keeping it in the county. And lastly, we have heard a rumor that y'all hopefully have decided to keep rehab here, regardless of whether Providence opts out or what their decision is. So we are more than willing to help out in this case, and actually would prefer that. So we are willing to do whatever we need to do to assist you in that transition to a company or a person that's interested or whatever. So if you have any questions, day-to-day operations, finances, potential patient numbers, or if you could provide us with some expectation, expectations that you have from us, that would be great. We'd be willing to do whatever we can to keep it here. So in closing, the staff and I want to thank you for all that you have done in the past, and you are continuing to do to keep Fairfield here in the county, rehab here in Fairfield County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on accountability for progress.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. I'd just like to share some observations from today's meeting, and a general theme that I've seen since the new regime has come onboard, and it all revolves around, this is positive, Billy. A lot of things I'm seeing now I didn't see two, maybe even one year ago. Let me just go through this so that you'll keep doing and getting even better. I'm seeing a lot more accountability. You guys are holding people accountable, you're holding yourselves accountable, and that produces good results. An excellent example is, you held the chamber accountable, and you got good results. Stood your line. Details on ordinances and other discussions, keeping us informed, even pictures, we've seen pictures in a couple of presentations, we've seen justifications for ordinances, we're seeing details, thank you, that keeps us informed and keeps us confident that you guys are making the right decision. Flexibility, flexibility is key to management, and you guys, you demonstrated tonight, the flexibility with Element and the Caterpillar property, all positive things for the county. You could have been inflexible, and everyone would have lost. You were flexible, and everyone won. And you're working with businesses. I'm seeing such a, such an effort to work with businesses. You know, tonight, we're seeing several business presentations, a couple of them we've already mentioned, the Sharp property, which is a big boon, and, and what you guys are doing now, and I know you don't need me to validate you, but I'm going to do it anyway, what you're doing now is you're managing the county with all these terms like accountability, giving us information and details, being flexible in your management, and working with business. Thank you, keep it up, more work to do, but those are key pillars that weren't in place before, now you just got to build on them. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
That concludes segment two.
All right, we're now down to county council time. Any council members have anything?
Yeah, I do.
Mr. Douglas?
I'm going to read this to y'all in the audience. An audit, audit number 699, in orders to regulate construction and development of flood hazard areas and incorporated areas of Fairfield County, and to repeal orders number 586. Can any of y'all tell me what this is? I don't think so, that's why, that's the reason I went through this thing so fast, I didn't get a chance to ask. Could Mr. Taylor tell me about it?
Again, upon first reading, we really don't have discussion, so I'm not fully prepared to talk about it. I can, if council wishes, have Chris Clausen, our development director, come up and, and speak to it.
If Chris is prepared to do so, I'd be fine with that. I will say that's patently why we have three readings, but if Mr. Clausen could speak to that, I'd be fine to allow that.
Good evening, council. In summary, essentially, the firm, the maps have been updated. That's done basically about every 10 years, 15 years in some cases, so we're going through that process now, and there's been a long public hearing process with that. So September is the official date when those maps become official.
Is this benchmark, benchmark markings for lake levels, or?
Yes, sir. So it's, it's, the firm maps are the flood elevation maps that the federal government went through, and they, they decide, you know, where that level's going to be. So as part of that process, we now have to adopt by ordinance, a standard ordinance, which is what we have. There's not a lot that's changed in it, other than the map number. They require you have a whole ordinance, again, with the new firm map number. So that's what this process is.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else, Mr. Douglas?
Yes. I'd like to make a recommendation. Any organization that requests Fairfield County Council, pay for the auditor and should supply the council with the full audit for all the monies received and salary amounts and other expenditures enclosed. Any organization that has received a sum of money for a specific reason should not be reimbursed until receipts are supplied for payment. When all surrounding counties finish their budget process, our administration should ask the counties that are similar to let us look at their budget, so we may see if money could be saved to lower our expenditures and spending and taxes. Fairfield County spent a lot of money building Midlands Tech, and money each year to run it. I would think a college would offer students courses locally to help them not having to travel to airport and Columbia campuses. Tech has a list of students from Fairfield County that could benefit by offering subjects for locals and students attending other colleges. What good is a college if it does not have needed classes to attend? Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Roof?
Yeah, I'd like to recognize Laura's tea room. I know nobody's here from there tonight, but it's right down the street from my hardware store, and I'm telling you, and it was like, as Randy Bright said, it was in USA Today compared to one in New York and one in Paris and a cup, all over, I mean, it's so, it's just outstanding recognition for what they've done, and I see it all the time, they bring busloads of ladies mostly from all over, and it's just a real boom to, to Ridgeway and Fairfield County. And so I think it's just outstanding.
Thank you, Mr. Roof. I'd second that and say, if, I don't know if there was an honorable mention, but I imagine the one in Winsboro would have been on it if it was.
It would be.
Fantastic, we've got good, two good tea rooms in the county. Ms. Goins? Mr. Pauli?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Willingham and her employee for being here tonight. I do feel like that you are truly dedicated to keeping rehab here in Fairfield County. I think rehab is very essential in Fairfield County, and I would do my best to keep it in Fairfield County.
Anyone else? Ms. Goins?
And of course, I'm very partial to it because we just had the service of my husband going through the rehab process and the great results that he had, so I'm definitely in support of it. It is needful, I would say, next to primary care, that's it, it, they kind of run hand in hand. And thank you so much for coming presenting, I know that you're dedicated, and I know that. Also, Mr. Chair, would like to make a comment, this may be kind of old news to some, to others, but the town and the county made it, came to an agreement with the park and the swimming pool to do some things with that. I want to commend the town for having the wisdom and insight to say, we're at a point now, we can't do some things, but I'm willing to work with the county for the greater good of all. That's what building a county is all about. I want to commend the team, the staff and team for saying, yes, you've carried this as far as you can, I believe that we can do some even better things with it, and then the town says that I work with you. Want to commend both of you, and thanks so much. And to the citizens, you haven't seen nothing yet.
Thank you, Mrs. Goins. Mr. Robbins?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Willingham, I just wanted to thank you and your staff as well. You know, I jokingly talk about, I should have a picture in there because I'm the MVP as many times as I've been there, honestly, and I do believe that rehab is something that we need in this county, and trust and believe that each one of our council, I hate to speak for us, but each one of us are definitely thinking about it. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
If we have another Wings and Wheels Air Festival next year, everyone in here should attend, it's really a good show. They had helicopter rides, airplane rides, they had things for the children, face painting, they did model airplane demonstrations, drone demonstration, and had all the air, the low enforcement vehicles there for the look at. Be sure to attend next year, you'd love it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Roof?
I'm going to have to echo what they said to y'all, Ms. Willingham and your assistant, because you can tell it's in your heart, you're dedicated to what you're doing, and it's very, I think, vital to Fairfield County, so hopefully you can get that worked out, too. So thank y'all for coming.
All right, anyone else? All right, I'll just add, and I'll echo as Mr. Roof just did and build upon other folks about the rehab at the hospital, I appreciate you coming and speaking with us. I think that, that probably, since I've been on council, the most brave thing I've heard from anybody that's come and spoken with us, and wasn't just something that was, you know, conjecture or something of that nature, but, but I will say that when we questioned some of the hospital administration, we had been chastised over that, so I think it's very brave of you to come in and ask some of those, those same type questions, and I certainly hope there are no reprisals against you for that. But I would just state, and I'll just put it out there, that council's interest in the rehab facility is not in just owning a piece of property, but if we, and I, if anyone, if I'm not, I'm not trying to speak for us to counsel, I'm one on seven, but myself and other members of the council, I think, are interested in, in trying to do exactly what you said and continue to provide rehab in Fairfield County. We, however, are not an organization that does that type thing, so we need someone who would be able to step in and do it in the case that the hospital falters or closes, who could carry that on, so just wanted to put that out there, that we certainly are interested in it, but we need somebody to be a partner in that. And I would ask, if you would, just hang around a few minutes after the meeting. Anyone else on council? All right, thank you very much. We are now down to executive session. We've got three items for tonight. A is a legal matter, update on litigation against SCNA, S C E and G in reference to the abandoned V.C. Summer new nuclear project. Item B, proposed contractual matter, discussion regarding the potential purpose of real property identified as Fairfield County, TMS number 126-03-01-001-000. Item C is economic development, update and discussion of potential contracts. We have a motion to go into executive session for those purposes.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council go into the executive session for the purposes as stated. No discussion, those in favor, aye. Those opposed, council's now in executive session, thank you.